Everyone and welcome to the April 12, 2022 Oshkosh County Council. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Wojciechowski?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Mugrower?
Here.
Paul Hansen?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Seven?
Here.
And Councilmember Miller will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have some introductions this evening.
I would let our department heads do those introductions. Madam Mayor, first, Mr. Maurer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Travis Dirks. Travis is our new Landscape Operations Manager, replacing Bill Stern, who retired recently. Travis has been with the city. Travis has been with the city for nine years. In 2013, he was promoted to our Lead Worker in the Landscape Operations. And through our recruitment to replace Bill, we found Travis to be the most qualified, so we promoted Travis into this position. He's a certified arborist and holds other various certifications and licenses. So I'd like to congratulate Travis.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
With the retirement of Battalion Chief Dan Morochek, we have selected our next Battalion Chief for the Oshkosh Fire Department. I'd like to introduce you to Aaron Dressler. He's been with the Oshkosh Fire Department for 24 years, been a very active member with our hazmat team, our technical rescue team, and involved heavily in the Wisconsin State Task Force Urban Search and Rescue Team. He's currently finishing his bachelor's degree in business at Fort Hays University. He's going to be a fantastic asset to our team. So I'd like to congratulate Aaron.
Congratulations. All right, next, we have a proclamation for National Poetry Month. So I'd like to welcome Tom Cannon. He is our first poet laureate for the City of Oshkosh and joining me with this proclamation. Whereas the Academy of American Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month in 1996, and whereas National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets, introduce Americans to the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, bring poets and poetry to the public in immediate and innovative ways, and make poetry an important part of our children's education; and whereas as National Poetry Month, under the leadership and direction of the Academy of American Poets, is now the largest literary celebration in the world; and whereas poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all Americans; and whereas poetry, as an essential part of the arts and humanities, affects every aspect of life in America today, including education, the economy, and community pride and development; and whereas poetry has produced some of the nation's leading creative artists and has inspired other artists in fields such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. And now, therefore, I, Lori Palmieri, do hereby proclaim April 1st through April 30th as National Poetry Month. I call upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all the people of the City of Oshkosh to observe this month to celebrate the cultural riches our community has to offer and to recognize the important role poetry in creating and sustaining this great nation with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. And Tom is going to tell us about a few of those activities and some of the programming going on. I want to give a great shout out to Tom for his collage poem that was the first ever included in our State of the City ceremonies and his support in reviewing, what was it, 180 poems submissions? I'll let him tell you about it.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, I wanted to invite everybody to go downtown. There is poetry and individual business windows. There are nice, big displays. There's about 20 of them, one's at the library. And there was 180 total entries by citizens of Oshkosh of all ages. And they're also pretty wonderful, and those are available on the website of the Oshkosh Public Library. Those would be great to peruse as well. In addition, in the Children's Department downstairs in the basement of the library, the kids are able to write a poem and put it on a leaf in their poet tree. And it's a really big display, and I would invite anybody to go down there and check out those poems and how that tree looks.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, we're at Citizens' Statements to Council. Do we have anyone registered, Jesse?
No one is registered.
Very good. We'll move on to Consent Agenda items. We have a motion and a second on consent.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on consent items? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And we have one new ordinance this evening. There will be no action taken on ordinance 22-150. That's amend section 12-10A53 and create section 12-10A54 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to bid protests. City Attorney, would you like to just kind of summarize what we're, or City Manager, what we're doing with this?
It's, just a second, I wrote it a while ago. So it's clarification of our bid protest language. We are splitting, splitting up bid protests essentially into the pre-opening and post-opening and setting forth the, the rules differ just a little bit between those. And then clarifying some of the procedure and also clarifying language related to the Federal Transportation Administration programs that the Transit Department deals with. So it's a cleanup.
Cleanup thing. All right. Thank you very much again. No action on that item. I will move on to pending ordinance 22-151. Prohibit on-street parking on West Sixth Avenue, south side from 170, 170 feet west of Michigan Street to 231 feet west of Michigan Streets.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on this item.
Actually.
Deputy Mayor.
If, I think this is probably under Director Collins's purview, and I apologize, I didn't give you a heads up, but I just, I want to ask you a quick question. Just since it's having an impact on the local, the residents there, and it's at the benefit for our business, have the residents been notified? Has anybody talked to them and just let them know what's happening and the reason for it?
Yes, we know, whenever we have something like this, we notify everybody that's on that street or adjacent to it. And they're actually, this particular location is across the street from the loading docks for Pingree Caswell. So there aren't any residential houses directly in this area. There's some down the street a little further. So really, the only place this might affect is there's an auto body shop, which the manager at Pingree Caswell said that they have a good relationship. And it was more related to when contractors work in the area and they don't know any better, they block their loading docks. And they said this has been going on for a few years. Because I said, "Well, isn't it just that one contractor?" They said, "No, this has happened multiple times." So if you could just help us to clarify that they shouldn't park there.
Appreciate the follow-up. I just wanted to make sure that, that anybody around there is just being notified as they should, so appreciate it.
Sure, no problem.
Any other questions or discussion on that item? All right, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, we're at new resolutions 22-152. Approve amendment to the 2022 capital improvement budget to increase funding for Parks Administration/Operations Building. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I'd love to ask a question of Russ or Mark, depending on who this is appropriate to, Finance Director Van Gompel, excuse me, and City Manager Roloff. So if I'm reading this correctly, we're taking on $3.6 million in new debt for this project. So why do it with debt as opposed to ARPA funding or using our cash balance?
Sure, those are all good options. When we looked at the funding for the project, initially, the city issued debt back in 2021 of about $1.5 million. And in 2022, we're planning to borrow an additional $5 million, $5.1 million to bring it to the 6.6. And with the bids coming in, we need to increase that. Since we went forward on the Boeing side to finance the initial portion of this project, I thought it would be best to recommend the City Council considering adding $3.6 million to the debt being issued. You certainly have the option of doing those other things. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of cash balance to do that. ARPA is definitely an option, but we talked about some projects last fall. I think council really didn't want it. My interpretation, the council's direction was not to use ARPA funding, but that certainly is an option. So since we're already funding part of the project with debt, I thought it would be best just to continue with the issuance of debt. So we would have to issue another 3.6. Next week, you'll have a list of all the projects. You gave staff direction to borrow about $20 million. And I had a little bit of contingency in that, so we don't need the full 3.6 on top of that. But we'll need to issue about 22-9, 22-950 next week if you want to go through with this. So this step would amend the CIP for those additional costs. Certainly is the direction of council, which way you want to go. But our recommendation is to consider the issuance of debt.
And it's fair to say that if we were to delay taking out this debt, rates are not going to be more favorable in the near, the near future.
They're going up as we speak. So as we put together our preliminary estimates, the additional 3.6 costs about four cents on the tax rate going forward.
Good, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got a question for Parks Director Maurer first and a follow-up comment. We had a good conversation a couple days ago regarding this project. And I guess, just kind of bluntly, how were, how was the number, how do you think the number was so off? Obviously, we had the shelter that we just broke ground on that was about a million, million and a half off. But in terms of total impact, other projects in the area, big, large projects, didn't see nearly the same difference in the estimates. And if you wouldn't mind just giving us and the public at home a little bit of your purview on that.
Sure. If you recall, when we were going through the CIP approval back last fall, October, November, we had a conversation with our architect and the construction administrator, asking if that number we were requesting in the 2022 CIP was still accurate, knowing that the costs were going up a little. At that time, they had just bid out a project in similar size to ours, a little bit larger. And he said, "I think we should add on about $200,000 just to be safe." So that was the direction that I came back to council and the city manager with. To say that the material costs and everything exploded since then, I think we're seeing that. Had I known it was going to be 3.5 million back in October, November, I definitely would have came forward and said, "I think it's going to be a lot larger." I guess I took the advice of our consultant that we have hired on doing the design and construction administration on that. So I have to say, it's material costs, and it's one of those things we're seeing, as you said, across all projects. I understand it's a larger percentage of ours. But had I known back then what I know now, we would have a different number back then.
And definitely not inferring that, that staff let us down on this, not in any way. Just, it's a big number, it's a big percentage number on, on top of it, and hard to swallow a little bit. But I know this council committed to the project, I think, two years ago when we, when we went through the budget hearings. Mr. Van Gompel, you got some?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a couple of quick follow-up points to that. Not sure if you've been tracking, but obviously, Oshkosh School District's experiencing increase in supply costs, and the NINA School District are increasing additional supply costs. So it's, it's not just the city and the city's projects. It's the times that we're dealing with right now. And it is very difficult to try to manage all these projects.
I read an article, the timing was good just yesterday regarding construction projects. And while this is a big project for us in the scheme of things in the commercial sector, this is a relatively smaller project. And they talked about the smaller projects are really getting hammered even harder because they, mobilization costs and things like that. You know, NINA Schools was only 14% over, and ours is like 30, 35%, which is, any other time you told me something was 35% over budget, I'd be, you would need to bring in the fire department to do the paddles on me. So we know that that is way off of what we anticipated. But I think what we're finding is these smaller projects, and I think the shelter is another example, that, you know, 30% off is, is not unusual, given the fact that lumber is like 50% higher, just the materials themselves. So we're going to have to talk long and hard about our facility planning as we talk about, you know, we're going to need to be scheduling that meeting. Because we're going to have, that hard discussion is going to happen with Ray's the first one in line. But there are other projects we're going to have to be facing the same thing.
I know council committed to the project two years ago, and I'm hopeful that we'll continue that, that support for it. It's a vital piece of property for the Parks Department and for our whole operation. To Councilmember Ford's question, I think it's a great question to ask in terms of, is that the right thing? And I think with, with interest rates as volatile, just as much as the, the cost of the, the goods to build this building, the cash in our pockets is probably more powerful, and taking on the debt is cheaper today than it will be next week or next year. And the debt next year will cost us even more in the long run if, if we were to, to wait it out or to use cash and then take on debt some other time in the future for a different project. So I think it's definitely appropriate. And while I don't want to swallow easily on that three-plus million dollars in new debt, I think it's the right thing for us to do, so I'll support it.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody and give a little kudos to, to Matt. He decided to front-load this thing and pitched it to this council. And the council had the foresight to approve Matt's plan. So number one, thank you to everybody. Number two, I don't believe in shelving projects. I mean, the city has a long history of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars and millions of dollars on developing plans. And then occurrences like this happen, and then they sit on the shelf, basically flushing that money down the toilet. If, if we were to shelve this for a year or two, we would have to go back, re-engineer, redraw. It would, it would be another million dollars wasted. So while I would have enjoyed grabbing some ARPA money, Russ, you, you made your point, so. But I do think it's appropriate to move forward with this project. Again, swallowing hard, but this is CapEx, it's not OpEx. So we are one and done. I will be voting in favor of moving the project forward tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller. Councilmember Ford, and then I'd like to speak.
Yeah, just quickly, I'm good moving forward with this and bonding for these reasons. Yeah, with rates as they are, things are going to get worse before they get better. It makes sense to, to extend it now. The need is obviously very clear. If you go by that building, it's kind of embarrassing. It's embarrassing to drive by it, I can't imagine working in it. I mean, the need is so obvious for that new building. So I think we need to move forward, we made a promise there. I also want to point out that we have made immense progress over the past five to 10 years, so I can't take any credit for this, but previous councils and the city manager in reducing our debt load, that put us in a position to handle situations like this. So thank you to all those folks who had the foresight over the past nine years or so where we've been getting our debt into a better position for a rainy day such as this one.
And I just, I would agree about the swallowing hard on these things, but even more so like a big gulp, right? Not just on the Four Seasons Building, but a big gulp on this. But in considering too that the, the schools are running into similar things, I think while, you know, that's not our domain, it's also a part and parcel to consider that this, you know, along with those other things will be increasing. But certainly, the timing has been pointed out that this is the best time to do, to take that debt on. And part of our strategic plan talks about, you know, the effectiveness of government. And while this project doesn't directly serve as a space or a use, it does provide for that effective government in supporting our parks and all of the things that they do. And certainly, that is one of the things that we need to deliver on. So I appreciate the work that's been done on this, and we'll support it as well. Would anyone else like to weigh in? All right, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, thank you. Resolution 22-153, award bid to SMA Construction Service for Parks Administration/Operations Building.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? All right, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Is that a deep sigh over there, Ray?
A little bit.
Congratulations.
How many years, City Manager, did you, has this been?
12.
12? Okay. Ray's counting the days.
Well, when he started, I said, "We're going to work on this Parks Building after the Public Works Building's done." And that lie was given to him in, in early 2010. So, yeah, it's been 12 years.
Very good. All right, we are at Resolution 22-154. Approve and execute relocation order, approve determination of necessity to acquire property generally located at West 2700 Block of Clearville Road for rural to basin for Sawyer Creek watershed. Plant Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, just real quick, at, at Plant Commission, we had quite the discussion about this item. It was mostly neighbors that were concerned about when the project actually goes forward, the extent to which it'll help mitigate some of their flooding issues on their property around there. So just want to point that out and make sure that stays in our radar screen, that the extent to which we can make this project one that improves the surrounding area, the better.
And I'm just being for a dollar amount on this, doesn't look like we...
This is not the authorization to purchase, this is finding the necessity. So we're, we'll do the relocation, yeah.
Okay.
We'll be coming back with that.
All right, very good. All right, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, we are at Resolution 22-155. Supporting incorporation of environmental justice concepts in the City of Oshkosh Plans and Processes. Processes. Sustainability Advisory Board recommends approval. And I do note also that it did go through the diversity, equity, inclusion, who concurred with SAB.
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion on 22-155. Kelly, can I ask you to come up? Just wanted to, I guess, have you talk a little bit about the process and, you know, where we started with a kind of a rough draft, I don't know, four months ago, and where we're at today. And appreciate all the work you and your staff did on this.
Sure. And really, City Attorney Lawrenceon was a big part of it too, helping, you know, city staff, you know, put this together and look at the resolution. So, yeah, we're very happy with it also. But this was originally, I think it was from the City of Wausau, a template that they had used. So city staff took a look at it and kind of, you know, added some items in there that are more applicable to Oshkosh and what we do here, what we think may work here with our current plans and processes. So we did, as Mayor Paul Mary state, we talked to SAB. And SAB immediately said, you know, "We would like DEI to weigh in this also." So that's why it's a little delayed, but it's always good to get some feedback. So everybody was pretty happy with the suggestions. And really, we are looking at ways to incorporate it into some of our plans and processes. So that means when we redo, for instance, like our comprehensive plan, perhaps the city strategic plan, you know, we take a look in how we can incorporate some of the policies and practices of environmental justice and put that in there. We also discussed in the CIP, adding that as potentially a kind of a scoring feature that City Manager Roloff may use when he's looking at different projects. And we've even discussed putting it in our, you know, staff memos that we send to you for the council packet. You know, we have a fiscal impact, do we have something along the lines for an environmental impact or something, you know, along those lines? So I think we'll continue to, you know, look at different ways to improve this, but I think it's a great start. And we're going to be putting some items on our website, so some data sets that folks can look at from the EPA website to see kind of where Oshkosh ranks compared to the state and to the nation. And I know that the state of Wisconsin is also working on some items too. So I think we'll have a lot of great information coming from this in the future.
And I especially appreciate the suggestion to add Wheat, the Wisconsin Environmental Equity Tool. While it's not complete, I believe it's in, potentially out for RFP right now. Certainly, that adds some other dimensions that complement the EJ Screen Mapping Tool, and appreciate that. I do want to just kind of like put out there that, you know, it's, it's been some months since I first kind of latched on to this. And we're, we're now at the, I think, the last, whereas it just mentions the trillion-dollar federal bipartisan infrastructure bill, which is now law. So we might want to change that. But other than that, just the two things that really struck, stuck out to me on, I'm going to call it Wheat, is the emphasis on not just, you know, consideration towards environmental hazards, but also, you know, emphasis on access to environmental benefits as well, of which we have many here. So I appreciate, again. And Councilmember Wojciechowski and then Ford.
Yes, thank you. First, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm glad that we were able to involve the DEI Committee. I serve on both, so it was really great. And I know they were thankful to be able to have that input. I hope, and I mentioned this at our last SAB meeting, but I hope that we can maybe use this as an opportunity to review the sustainability plan. Because I didn't even know we had one to begin with until I started like digging a little bit. I know it hasn't been updated since 2020, I believe. And there wasn't a section about environmental justice, so I think this would be a good opportunity if we're going to include this in that, to maybe just review it in general. But, Mark, do you know, do we have any, like, sustainable or like environmental metrics right now for the city?
I'm not aware of anything was included in the plan. The plan just had objectives and goals, but it never dug deep like we have in other parts of our strategic plan.
We did actually do a greenhouse gas emissions inventory that's somewhat dated. And I think that even went into like the second round of that, where some milestones were met in the ICLI.
Yeah. I would refer more to milestones rather than metrics.
Sure.
Yeah, potato, patato type of thing. But we don't have anything more than just those milestones that were adopted close to 10 years ago.
So that might just be something to look at. And I know... I know, because we're talking about the DEI metrics later today on this agenda, and I don't want to overload departments or the city with more metrics, but maybe just something to think about and look at in the future.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah. Thanks to everybody for cleaning up parts of this. I know that, I was a little concerned that some of the things that were word for word with the Wausau resolution and then some of the things that were duplicative in the first draft, but I appreciate that was all worked out by both staff and the committee work. I think that's how it should happen. I also appreciate that the actual resolution includes a definition of environmental justice. I know we hear terms like justice and equity, and they can seem like buzzwords without much meaning. So real quickly, I just want to read that. You know, so the definition here is fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. And I read that as simply a commitment to this idea that we all have an equal share in our government and that we, as a council, need to consider that when making decisions. So I'm very happy to support this for the same reason I support at-large elections, the same reason I like having a professional manager. I think we need to, as a body and as an executive, understand that we represent all residents here in this city, and our policy should reflect that as opposed to picking and choosing which pockets get representation. So for those reasons, I'm happy to, happy to support this.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, we're at Resolution 22156, amend 2022 City of Oshkosh fees and charges for the issuance of right-of-way permits to establish a cap for permit fees for work in the right-of-way.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Are there any questions on fees? Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Were you banking on me asking a couple of questions?
I was just getting ready to come up here, just in case.
Yeah. I'm fine with this, guys. Obviously, you've done your research on it. I want to make sure two things. It doesn't favor any one organization, utility, or anything like that. And number two, were you getting a lot of pushback?
No, actually, we were not really getting a lot of pushback. It's just, as Justin was working on some of this stuff and conferring with Mr. Praska in the city attorney's office and looking at, you know, kind of history across the state, we really felt that we needed to take a closer look at this, establish some criteria for which this maximum would apply, so that it's not, you know, the Wild West, if you will. You know, there's some very specific criteria outlined in the resolution for how this maximum would apply. So because of the criteria being outlined ahead of time, I really feel that there is not an ability to favor any one company over another. It's, you know, a lot of companies are submitting projects that, you know, would go over this threshold and meet all of these criteria.
Sure.
So we were just, you know, we wanted to make sure that we had the criteria established so that, you know, when we meet with any company, it's, okay, here's the criteria for these, and here's what triggers this maximum.
Yeah, your legwork on the memo, which I'm sure Mark liked stealing credit for, but, no, seriously, nice job. I was real happy with what you guys had structured it before, and I think this makes the message clear that it wasn't intended to be punitive whatsoever. So we all understand the cost of doing business and things like that. And then if you guys could just give me some budgetary numbers of what it looks like for the first quarter somewhere down the road, when you, when you guys got time to look at that, what, what kind of revenue this has generated for the city.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Great job. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Very good. All right. So the last item on our new resolutions this evening are to designate, Resolution 22157, to designate the month of May as Nomo May. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. All right, discussion. Just a couple of questions. Ms. Kniforth, first of all, thanks for putting, placing in the resolution the specifics about registering for this program. I think it was brand-new for Oshkosh last year. Other cities have done this and maybe a little more practice at it, but certainly getting the word out about that registration is important. What I do have a question about is, and be it further resolved for registering with the planning division, the requirements that would alleviate any kind of pink notice from the inspections department. Can that be done through our Connect Oshkosh app, where they take a picture of the Nomo May sign in the yard and send it in or register through Connect Oshkosh? Or how, how does that happen?
We could certainly look into that to see if that would be another way to, you know, collect those addresses of folks that would want to participate. We're also going to look like on the website if we could have a sign up too, in addition to, you know, contacting planning. So we actually have a meeting tomorrow to come and, you know, figure out exactly what we would do. We're going to do a lot of public education for this round. As you said, we learned a lot from last year. So I think public education of, you know, what Nomo May means, and, you know, so your neighbors know if you have a sign in the yard, what that means and what you're trying to do. And then at the same time, making sure folks, if they want to participate, they know they need to sign up with us to ensure that they don't get violation or notice as far as if their grass exceeds eight inches. So we can definitely look at other ways to make it easier for folks to sign up.
And city manager, would this go on the hot topics on the front page that we have for the website?
Oh, yeah. That, this is, I mean, the whole idea, and I think Councilmember Wojciechowski talked about it's promoting, and Councilmember Erickson also said the same thing. We need to do more promotion of this, and that's probably where we need, that's probably where we were lacking. And rather than focus on the negative side, which is people complaining about somebody not mowing, there were a lot of people who just got off the hook last year. They weren't committed to Nomo May, they just didn't mow in May, and then they got blended in with the people who were conscientious about it.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, so just a couple of brief comments. When we did this last year, obviously, it wasn't a trial. I expected, I guess, and it's hard to quantify, I understand, but I guess I expected some information coming back from somebody, whoever wanted this to continue, to tell us how it benefited, you know, this Oshkosh-based community. I understand this is, you know, it's, it's pretty broad in its impact, and it's very, very, very difficult to quantify. But I, I expected something to tell us this is the benefit we brought to the environment and to Oshkosh by doing this. I'm not a huge fan of adding more work for city staff. I just, I'm, I'm not. I don't enjoy the red tape. I don't enjoy the bureaucratic process of just adding things for the sake of having staff do more work. And this just has staff doing a little bit more work than, than they should have to, in my opinion. I'll support it. I think we should do Nomo April, so, so I don't have to get out there and mow it right now or anytime soon. We can change that to Nomo April. And it may be kind of comical for me to say this out loud a little bit, but is there any appetite to actually, to modifying this that it's backyards only? And here's why. We do a fair amount of sustainable things in this community and allow neighbors and homeowners to do a fair amount of things in their backyards, so it doesn't have a negative impact on their neighbors and in their smaller communities here in Oshkosh. Beekeeping, the chicken coops, any of that type of stuff, it's backyard-based, and there's a reason that it's in the backyard. Is there any appetite for just making this a backyard-only thing, allowing, allowing property owners to do what they want to do to help, to help us and to participate? But yet, maybe alleviating some of the burden that falls upon city staff by some of those phone calls, because some individuals don't particularly care what their neighbors are doing with their front yards? Just, just some, some thoughts.
So I'll bite. We have a lot of corner properties. I think that would kind of circle back around to adding more work for staff, sorting out, you know, side, back, front for all the corners in the city. And certainly, it kind of adds more for differentiating, but I'd like to see it remain in its current form to multiply those benefits, that emergence timeframe. So I'd like to see it remain. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I want to echo Matt's sentiments. I'm on the fence on this one.
Not on the mower?
Yeah, exactly. I should be walking. But the staff members that I talked to are, this is just a disaster. Or it was last year. Let's hopefully, it won't be this year. And it puts our staff in a unique position where they've, they've got to be the lawnmower police. And so I, I guess what I'm asking is, is how we structure this to make it easy for, easier for city staff. I don't think anybody's against having more bees around. You know, I actually looked into beekeeping last year, but there were some thoughts that I would be very unsuccessful at it, so I passed on it. But can we, can, can we make this easier for staff? I mean, I like Matt's idea about backyards. I get the mayor's position on front yard side, and again, we might be creating more work, but obviously, we all need to be a little bit more organized for this next year. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, and like I had mentioned, I think we're learning a lot from last year. So I think just having a list of folks that are participating and being able to give that to our inspectors, and they can quick reference it, I think that's going to help alleviate, you know, some of those concerns with the people that are, you know, keep calling. And then we can, we'll be, we'll be much farther ahead, you know, this year, because we know there's going to be people that aren't signed up. But, you know, then we can address those issues if they're not signed up and hopefully take care of a majority of those complaints.
And to echo Matt, again, I'm getting along with you tonight, but I'd like the people who initiate this, come forward and tell us the benefits, and if they're measurable and everything. I just see this as a slippery slope, where all of a sudden, somebody's going to say, well, don't paint your house anymore, because the paint is bad for the water runoff. And it, it's a slippery slope when we go down these things. So, yeah, but I guess I can swallow on this for one more year, but I'd like to hear from those people and, and staff, you know.
Sure. Yeah, definitely. We'll, we'll do a better job, you know, tracking. We'll try to have something put together, and then we can reach out to, I think there's a regional group that brought it forward last year, I think maybe from Lawrence University, perhaps, and maybe we can get in touch with them.
And they have some measurements out there in the increase, and I don't recall what media I read that on. It may have been the Post Crescent, but I do recall seeing some numerical quantification, although I don't know how they do that.
Right.
But we're going to move on to Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. I, this time, I know, at least for me, I had someone from SAB ask if we could bring this back. So I don't know if anyone else had a different way of how they heard about it, but that was just for me. But I like the idea of having this, having them register. I think that will help. And this is just an idea not to add more on to it, but if we're looking for kind of an impact or just generally how it went for people to participate, perhaps considering doing some type of survey just for those people who signed up, you know, because they can kind of get a better idea of how it affected their yard and, I don't know, just, it's going to be kind of, I don't know, qualit, it's going to be more qualitative than quantitative, but still might produce some, some good information about how it went.
Councilmember Ford and then Erickson.
My mind's already turning for how to kill time in the summer. I'm going to get my kids to count the bees.
Right?
That should kill an afternoon, right? No, no, I'm sorry. Points well taken, all around. You know, I think that the main concern I had with this was that people were using this as an excuse to just not take care of their property. Or more to the point, they weren't going to take care of their property anyways, and this was a reason for people to get some regulatory relief. So I hope that, I mean, I think it's worth doing for one more year with the expectation that we'll have an idea of how many people are actually participating in this. And hopefully, somebody from the group that pushed it originally will come back and let us know how it's going. My gut tells me this is probably going to be nothing more than a handful of people getting a little bit of regulatory relief. I happen to be passionate about bees, so I'm guessing it's not going to be a huge deal. But at the very least, I think it's worthwhile to find out how many people are actively trying to participate in this.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thanks. I think in some communities, they require those who register to also put a, like a yard sign in the yard. Is that something that we're requiring?
Yeah, this regional group has already made some yard signs, so they already asked for us to have some here at City Hall. So, you know, while we're not going to require them to have it, we want to encourage them just so it's more visible, so folks can, you know, learn more about it that way, too.
Yeah, and I think that helps signal to neighbors that
Absolutely.
that it's an official registered property. Yeah.
And I guess I just want to emphasize to folks too, who may be watching, and maybe we can, you know, this gets posted out on our new official city Facebook page as well, that if you don't register, you could end up receiving one of those naughty slips and having to pay a fine. So please, 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 make sure that you, not only you register, but you tell anyone else who you know that's participating to register as well. Councilmember Ford and then Hanson.
Sorry, I just, because we got calls last year on, as councilmembers. This does not mean that you, you know, can't mow your lawn. It doesn't mean that if you don't mow your lawn, the city's going to come do it for you at the end of May. So by all means, make sure if you do participate in this, that you have a plan to take care of your lawn afterwards, and don't feel like you need to participate in this. It's optional.
Councilmember Hanson.
You took mine.
Oh.
One thing I get to say. But no, I believe Nomo May really helps our environment, and if you want to tack on no spray May, no chemicals on your lawns, maybe help a little extra too. Might that be an option as well? I approve it, so. Thank you.
All right. Well, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, thank you. We are at council discussion on direction to city manager and future agenda items. Looks like we have our new organizational meeting, 11/19 at noon. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the city manager, and this one was actually going to fall more under finance director as well, for a future agenda item or at least, if you want to send us a memo or however you want to have this conversation. But earlier tonight, we just approved adding on some more debt that we hadn't anticipated taking on. And we've all agreed that debt is as cheap as it's going to be probably for the next several quarters, if not year or two. several quarters, if not year or two. And given that, I'd like to hear if it's, if it would be a good idea or bad to have a discussion on taking on debt this year that we would typically take on next year. Front-loading that debt in '22, taking it on and trying to save us some interest long-term, and looking forward instead of just waiting to see what it is in 12 months. We know we're going to take on debt next year. The rough number is out there. Fine-tune it if you must, but I think it's worthy of at least us learning pros and cons if that's something we should be considering or not.
Other councilmembers?
As Russ does the walk-up.
Yeah.
That is a very slow.
It's certainly something that has been talked about because of, because we know the rates are going up.
We know they're going to.
And I've got another topic to talk about relative to the supply chain and kind of that issue, but I gave you time to walk up, Russ.
Yeah, we've started the behind-the-scenes work for the debt issuance, but we can always still modify that. I think your question will best be served next council meeting when we have the representatives from LRS here. I'll give them a heads up, and we can start pre-planning a little bit and see what some of those thoughts or options might be. But we have already started working with our bond council to get the resolution prepared at the amounts that we previously talked about. So let me just ask some questions and see if we can get you some answers.
Appreciate that.
Do we have a draft yet, I think, of the budget calendar workshops?
That is in, that is on page 239 of the agenda packet. That's okay. It's a, I was looking for it myself. So, yeah, we've got that in there. And I really draw this to your attention to take a look at the different dates. Probably the one, the first date you probably want to keep on your radar is June 29. That is the week before the Fourth of July, so, and that's a fifth Tuesday. And that was, anytime we see a fifth Tuesday, we jump at that opportunity. Now, that might be, you might look at a fifth Tuesday and say, "Finally, I get a break." And we're sitting there, what more can we put in? So that's June 29. It's a fifth Tuesday, and it's also the Tuesday before the Fourth of July. But that gives us an opportunity. One of the things I want to praise Russ and his staff for is we are giving you the capital improvement plan before July 1. You've never seen it before July 1. I mean, that, so the work that we're doing gives you time to do that, to take a look at those things and say, "Okay, what do we want to achieve next year?" Debt management is always a key element to that. And I think, to the deputy mayor's point, we need to have that discussion even earlier because of all the implications of it. So it's certainly valuable. So that's where we normally do it. But I think, given the discussion, it's a valid point, and I'm going to be talking about supply chain issues. And based on our discussion, I mean, if you don't mind, I can segue into that.
One moment. Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Mark, this is usually where you kind of ask for some direction. I saw a lot of heads nodding here on Matt's proposal to get Russ to start moving on this. I mean, the Fed has signaled their position of what they're going to do with rates here. So I'd really like to jump on this. And I would be remiss in not thanking the Long Range Finance Committee for an amazing job of what they're doing these days, so, and where they are with the budget. So, I mean, do we all kind of agree we probably need to step on the gas here a little bit?
I would agree, but I'm not going to be available for that date.
So.
Yeah.
That's right, because of the discussion you just told me about.
Other councilmembers have summer calendars?
But we can factor that in.
Sure. Let's just, you get my point, I think, so.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes. Yeah, that's all I got to say. Well said.
Yep.
All right. But yes, earlier is helpful.
Okay. I misspoke. The 29th is not a fifth Tuesday. That's a, it's after our fourth meeting on the 28th. So maybe we can look around, maybe we can, because you're leaving on the 28th, if I recall correctly. Not want to, don't want to ruin the day before you leave, but I mean, another option is we could do it on Monday night, the 27th. I'm not sure, Russ, of that. So we'll kick that around, but knowing that you're not going to be here on the 29th.
I can't do the 27th.
The whole week, you can't do the 27th?
Just the 27th.
Would that conflict with DEI?
It would, it would now. So we'd have to figure out. So a lot of different moving parts. So we'll, we'll take a look at that. Okay. I would encourage you to keep looking at that calendar and looking at your personal schedules. You know, the other one that I usually point out at this time is the council workshops are tentatively scheduled, the all-day workshops are October 17th and 18th. And are those Monday, Tuesday, Russ, do you recall? I didn't bring my calendar. That's okay. I can do it real fast. They are Monday, Tuesday. So if you can keep those in mind, because obviously, that's going to impact a lot of different work schedules. But those are probably the biggest dates that we're staring at. But obviously, anytime you're dealing with the summer, you know, I get it. We all get it. We, this is, it's hard. But maybe we knock off some of these things, because the biggest topic we typically do during the capital improvement plan is debt management. So maybe we nip it in the bud a little bit. We are going to have that on the agenda in two weeks because we're bringing LRS to talk about this. If we want to amend that, that's the time we do it.
And I believe we're also looking at sometime in June for a strategic plan as well, which would precede the first budget workshop typically.
Yes. That was, yeah, that was the idea.
You had it?
Oh.
That was a conversation the mayor and I just had today, because I got an email just today about that. Fitz, do you remember what date that might be? This is your all-day strategy. It's not budget-related, but it has a budget impact, obviously, because of what we talked about.
I think we're working on getting together with the supervisors in April. And we've looked at potentially June 23 as a date for council and department heads, but we haven't formalized that yet. We were going to discuss it with the department heads tomorrow. So that's kind of where we're at.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there's your, the budget calendar in front of you. And again, set the dates. This is never going to be perfect for everybody, especially when we're doing this in summer months and everything.
That's a mark. Just one other comment on the budget calendar, just for your reference. In November for the budget adoption, that's actually scheduled on a Wednesday because Tuesday's Election Day. So the city council meeting will be pushed back one day. You might want to mark your calendars for that as well. November 9th is a Wednesday. So it's a little bit different than what we've done in the other years while we're working around the elections.
Thank you very much.
The mayor initially mentioned the organizational meeting April 19th at noon. In years past, we've done, sometimes we've done the council photo at that meeting. I don't know if we're going to be able to pull that off. So we're thinking that we can, if you can get here a little early on the 26th, if that's possible, we could do it at 5:30. Do you think that's possible, that we could do it at 5:30? Okay, that's kind of what we're tentatively looking at. So Diane will confirm with Max, the photographer, tomorrow, and then we'll let everybody know. So that's what we have on future workshops. And I took note of the deputy mayor's comment about the debt. So that's all we have, upcoming workshops and whatnot.
All right. Thank you. Council member announcements and statements. This opportunity for council liaisons to give updates on boards and commissions. Any takers? Councilmember Wojciechowski.
SAB met last week, and in addition to the environmental justice resolution that they passed, they're working on a native plant ordinance and just reviewing our shoveling and salting ordinance, just because when we met with someone, I forget what organization they were from, but it had to do with that, they found kind of some inconsistencies in it. So we've just been reviewing those. Those are kind of the big things.
Was that the wild ones? Was that the organization?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Also, unrelated, it wasn't really mentioned because nothing changed, but I did just want to say congratulations to our colleagues for being re-elected and rejoining us. Nothing changed, so we didn't have to say anything, but they did get elected, so congratulations.
Yes.
It was weird.
Congratulations. Yeah, I think we, yeah, we'll definitely have a big hurrah at the next one at noon. All right, very good. Anyone else for boards and commissions? All right. And we are at city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've got an updated list of outstanding issues with the first quarter being completed. I'll be providing you with a report on progress towards my goals. Some of them are summarized here, but I'll give you a little more depth in a follow-up report. Certainly happy to answer any questions you might have about those. I did take off the environmental justice because I was anticipating you were going to be adopting it tonight, so that's off. So, but we're happy to take something off the list. But if you've got any questions, happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll move on to the other topic, which is kind of timely with the discussion we had about debt. And that has to do with the supply chain issues relative to capital expenditures. I asked staff to provide you in the weekly newsletter a couple updates. Fire Chief Stanley gave you a little update on fire trucks. You may recall that you approved an advance ordering of our 2023 fire truck because it was an 18-month lead time. And if we're lucky, we'll get it by October of '23 for 2023. We have a quint, which is our fancy way of saying our ladder truck, that is due for replacement in 2024. We were informed not only that there is a 22-month lead time. So if we ordered it today, we might get it by February of 2024. But in addition to that, that there's going to be a price increase of about 7% first of May. There will likely be at least one more price increase before the end of the year of a comparable size, not to mention what other orders might come in there. In addition to the deputy mayor's point about borrowing in advance, we may, it may preclude us, it may be in our best interest to actually order in advance. The other one that I wanted to point out was something, and the fire chief and the public works director made my day. They came and talked to me about these very topics the exact same day. Mr. Robbie came in and talked about that our Oregon Street project for 2022 is likely not going to be able to start until September, because that is the earliest we can expect the pipe delivery. Can't put in new sewers without new sewer pipe. So that is a challenge for us. That can't be changed. That's, it's, it's, the contractor isn't going to order pipe until he knows he or she has the job. So the contractor has been awarded, and the contractor dutifully ordered the pipe. But we got to wait nearly six months. One of the things James and I have talked about is that our folks, our engineers, do an estimate on how much pipe we need. And that's, that's what they bid on. That's what a contractor bids on. What we're thinking is, we just order it. Estimate what Project A is going to need in terms of sewer pipe, we order it now. And we'll cross our fingers and hope that it gets delivered by the first of January, then we'll be able to start. Those are the creative things that we're looking at doing to address these supply chain issues, because otherwise, we could run into the same dilemma at this time next year. As much as we hate construction season, I do not want to start construction season in September. That's just going to just mess up every, all our mojo. James says it's possible, and we don't have a choice this year. The contractor can't start. So those are the creative things we're looking at doing.
Is that creative hoarding and collecting?
It's more like forecasting.
Okay, there's a, there's a delicate balance between the two, and we're crossing it. With that said, Mr. Van Gompoel said, "When you're ordering, when you're putting an order in, you're pretty much committing the city." So his argument is that we should include that in our CIP like we did with the fire truck a few months ago for the, for that, and perhaps even borrow for it. So we were talking about that whole borrowing thing just on those two alone. So we're tracking the types of things you're talking about. That'll take a little more work, but, you know, we got a fairly good idea of what our capital improvement plan is going to be for next year, because we budget for two years in advance, and then we reset it once we know. So we'll probably come back anyway, with, at a minimum, asking that we, at the next meeting, I think we need to order that quint so that we can get it delivered in 2024. And so I'm going to, that's my plan, to bring it forward. The pipe will probably come soon enough, but that's not urgent. If it's, but if it's six months lead time, I want to have it ordered no later than, say, September 1. So that, you'll see that type of thing coming up.
Councilmember Miller, and then deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Mark, I would encourage all the department heads to start thinking like this. I know firsthand what, what some of this stuff, the lead time's on, and it's, and they'll, and they're not lying to you, but we've had people say, "Oh, it's in the warehouse. It can be there in eight weeks." And all of a sudden, that, that order got shipped to somebody else, and now it's 30 weeks out. And so, and again, I'm speaking just for myself, but the engineers know how much pipe, they know what kind of pipe, buy the pipe, fund the pipe now. Because I know of two communities that have passed on projects. They've just, they've just wiped public works projects out for this year. It's a, it's a waste of time. So, so I would encourage this council to look hard at, order the truck, order the pipe, order the staples, order the paper, whatever you need. We get it, so.
I have given that direction.
Can you preorder concrete? I don't even know.
That you can't do, because concrete is the most, shortest shelf life of any product you can buy. But getting, getting the other stuff is, we're going to have to be creative. I gave that, that speech about everybody else looking at it to pretty much everybody, and everybody's thinking about that. You know, we're going to take a look at vehicles, you know, if, you know, how long is it going to take to get a squad car if the lead time is, you know, getting chips, just little chips in a car is a problem. So we're going to think about all these things, because, you know, otherwise, we're going to have vehicles that are going to be on their last legs, and we're still waiting for the, for the part to come in or something like that. So thank you for the feedback. I'm not sure if anybody else.
Deputy Mayor.
First, just a thank you, of course, to Mark and the full staff. This is what we get with the high caliber people we have leading our departments, that you're, you are looking forward, you are trying to figure out the best way to do this, and not just doing what you've always done. So a big thank you for that. That, in the end, it's about taxpayer dollars, and can we get as much bang for that buck as possible? So a huge thank you on that. I would much rather be way out in front on the other communities than way behind the other communities when it comes to our capital projects. And to Mr. Miller's point, the worst-case scenario would be us pushing back a project because we can't get material that we could have possibly, if we exerted the effort, got it, you know, ordered ahead of time. Because that will just have ripple effects in our capital improvement plan. So I think it's, it's absolutely worthy of taking on the new debt earlier to allow staff to save us as much in the long run as possible. We would just, it would be really prudent for you to tell us that you're trying to save us money or you're trying to save us time when you're suggesting these things in advance. And in the Quint's case, it could be both. And when it's coming towards the pipe, we don't know the volatility of those, you know, the pricing on those materials. But, you know, is it price or is it availability that is pushing the need for us to do this earlier than normal? I think would be, just would be reasonable for you to tell us when you come to us with these.
Thank you. That's all I have to say about that, which was a lot. And then lastly, you know, I think Councilmember Wojciechowski can, can discuss with, along with me about the fact that the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee has approved the measures as was directed by council. Took a couple iterations, but I think the end product was very good, and I appreciate DEI not just rubber-stamping it, because they clearly did not rubber-stamp it, and the departments for recognizing that this is a process. And, you know, one of the things I think the staff was concerned about is, you know, it's going to show that we need to improve. And it's like, that's okay. It's okay to demonstrate that you want to improve. And DEI appreciated that honesty.
Do you expect this to come, do you expect that to come back to council for approval? This, we're just getting a first glance at this. I just have a couple of questions.
It's not an approval thing, because the council's specific direction was that DEI approved it.
Created their metrics.
So we have the, certainly happen, happy to answer questions. And I would, I would direct you to Mr. Fitzpatrick. He worked with the departments on putting them together, and I want to give him the credit. And if you don't like something, I'll also give him the blame. But, but there are a lot of questions. But part of the focus was, while there's certain HR, there's also other elements to equity and inclusion that we wanted to include, such as, for example, ADA accessibility. So we added a measure for accessibility for, for the disabled community. And we also, on beyond HR stuff, because we can sit there and talk about the profile of different personnel, but it was like, all the departments wanted to think long and hard and, and look at ways we can do things. And I think we did that. So if you have any questions, I think Mr. Fitzpatrick and his staff will be happy to do that. And I know you have a copy in there. If you got, if you got one that you've been thinking about, you know, Mr. Fitzpatrick's here, I don't know if he can answer it right off the cuff, but we, we spent a lot of time on this, so.
Well, maybe Mr. Fitzpatrick would like to come forward. I just am asking about one in particular. I'm a little puzzled about what this means under community development and under community development, and Ms. Nyforth maybe, perhaps who, but the number five item on there, code compliance maintenance program. Measure the utilization of code compliance maintenance program to LMI residents. Maybe that could be elaborated on a little more, what that means, because some of our neighborhoods that experience the LMI demographic are maybe feeling a little bit picked on. So what does this mean?
Well, it was really intended to be the opposite, and just to piggyback off of what Mark said earlier, you know, one of the things that we discussed with DEI, and I think they were receptive to, is we wanted to try to address diversity, equity, inclusion across a variety of spectrums, not just race. So we talked about accessibility, we talked about income, we talked about race. So we tried to, we, we discussed, oh, our MEI index, you know, and how the progress that we've made there. So we tried to focus in a variety of dimensions, to try to measure our progress in all those areas. And as it relates to, to maintenance and property maintenance, in areas that are low and moderate income, we specifically talked to community development director Nyforth about how we can impact those low and moderate income areas, how we can, you know, measure what the state of affairs is, and what are, and what we can do to move the needle in those areas. Talked about different funding programs, we talked about a whole variety of things. So those measures are intended to be forward-looking and improvement-oriented, not to be punitive.
Kelly's right behind you, so she can fill in.
Kelly, you want to fill in the blanks on?
Yeah, so, yeah, let's just redefine move the needle. Does that mean move the needle as in give more compliance tickets, or move the needle as in?
No.
Okay, great.
As Assistant City Manager said, Fitzpatrick said, typically, sometimes in the low to moderate income areas, census tracts in the city, we do see more compliance issues as far as just the, you know, the, with the properties being in compliance with the code. So we're actually developing a program to help folks, you know, that they might not have that income, and to help pay for these improvements, if it's a new roof, or if it's windows or something. We want to be able to give them the funding to try to help pay for this, to bring that house back into compliance. And we're not just going to put a Band-Aid on it and just take care of the windows. If we look and we say, well, the roof will probably be, you know, in a couple of years, it might need to be replaced, we're going to look at that, too. So it can really, you know, add that value in the, in the neighborhood, and hopefully help that homeowner also.
So might this also be an area where, for example, the discussion that took place a little over a year ago, targeted areas for assistance with large item debris, junk pickup, and that kind of thing?
That could certainly be an offshoot of this. Right now, we're just starting working with our inspections division, and, you know, they have, you know, code violations out there, so we're working with them and with our attorney's office, and identifying certain areas, and in some cases, they go to court, and they just say, I cannot, you know, I can't replace it, I just don't have the income. If they're fixed income, whatever it may be. So we still want to have, you know, resources in a way for them to try to fix their homes, and this is a way that we see could benefit low to moderate income areas.
Okay, thanks for spelling that out a little more for me, because I read it a little bit differently. Appreciate it. Councilmember Ford, and Councilmember Erickson, after Ford.
Yeah, thank you, staff and then DI committee for your work on this. I know it wasn't the easiest thing in the world, but in the beginning, we wanted this to be real, we wanted these concepts to be actionable. If it was viewed as something top-down, where we're just telling you what to do, it wasn't going to happen, right? There wasn't going to be buy-in. So I think having this process be difficult is what's going to make it ultimately successful. So really happy to see where this goes. And to the city manager's point, yeah, I mean, when you're setting a baseline, it's like, you ever do Weight Watchers, that first time you get in the scale, it's not fun, right? But you're setting a baseline, every week after that, you make progress.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm looking right at you, Mark, you know? This is, that's going to be for your performance review. No, I'm kidding. But right, there's huge, there's huge value to setting a baseline, and establishing what the issues are, as opposed to us just talking back and forth to one another about things where we don't actually have data. So there's huge value here, so I appreciate all the hard work.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thanks. Just wanted to echo that, thank you, and kudos for all of the work of staff and DEI committee. I think this is a great starting point. You know, it's hard to, this is a huge step, to put in place some metrics and kind of incorporate this into the work, but, you know, if you, if you aren't measuring something, you can't do, do anything about it. So this is a big step, so thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just do a follow-up question, then, maybe for Director Maurer. When, when your department was looking at, you know, putting together some of these, was there any thought or discussion about, you know, looking at our park score, and the, you know, percentage of residents, and LMI neighborhoods, for example, in a 10-minute walk proximity to park space? Did that come up at all? I see that we have something about, you know, distributing all of the funding available for the Pollock Community Water Park Financial Assistance Program, but I'm just curious if that came up.
On the park score, we did not look at that, but it's something for future we can take a look at. I think for all the departments, one of the focuses is going to be a lot of the ADA audit that we went through, so there's a lot of focus on that.
Sure. And we've done great on that with parks, right?
We've made good strides, but there's a lot to do, and I think that, for us, was going to be a big focus to kick off. But there's definitely, this is a start, and I think there's a lot of things we can look at for the future.
Oh, Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. And I, you might have answered this, Mark, when we actually talked about this at DEI, but is the plan to put these on the website similar to how we have the strategic goals, like it shows like the progress of them in real time?
Yeah, absolutely. Now, if you look at, if you dig deep in some of these measures, some of these are just going to be annually reported, others can be done quarterly, so it'll depend on the measure itself, but the idea is to be transparent about this, and so we're going to, we will put it in, just like, we're going to incorporate it into our Invisio program, which is our performance metric software that we use, and we're going to put this in there, just like we do all of our other performance measures.
Great. And any way you can promote this, I think it's great for people in the community to just know that, like, these are things we're talking about and looking at. I know, I believe DEI is getting a social media page, it sounds like, or something like that, I think Diane had said that. So just another avenue to put that out there, so the people know we're talking about it.
Very good, thank you.
And could I ask Mr. Fitzpatrick another question? I don't know if this came up or not, but in each of these sections, we talk about, you know, the percentage of, regarding gender, the percentage of permanent employees by gender in the workforce. Was there any discussion, too, about pay equity, gender pay equity in there?
There wasn't any discussion about gender pay equity. And, and one of the reasons is, we, we look at that through a variety of different dimensions in regard to compensation, too. The pay study that we have ongoing right now, that's one of the factors that is evaluated through that assessment. So we, we constantly look at that.
Do, do you know where we are right now on that? I mean, hate to ask you that.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any problems with gender equity in regard to our pay at all.
Our pay system is so.
Structured.
Structured and strict, that it's, it's blind to anything other than that classification. And that's where we, that's what we do, take a look at skills, knowledge, responsibilities, and factor all those things in, regardless of who the inhabitants of those positions may be.
Okay, thanks. All right, wonderful. Thanks again to DEI and to staff for putting this together, it was a lot of work.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Excellent. So we will recess now until noon on April 19th, 2022, to welcome our new council. Yes, this is our last meeting of this council, so we're not adjourning, we're recessing.
Need a motion to recess, though, still? Looks like you're getting right of right over there.
Yeah, I think we do.
We usually do a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are recessed.